Is Walter coming? Do you guys know?
I haven't talked to him.
I haven't heard a word from him.
All right, thanks, Bob.
You're making a call, okay?
Can you text Walter?
Yeah.
And the other gentleman? All right, very well. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see everyone in this room after that long time. I want to welcome you to the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeals for tonight's agenda on Wednesday, September 9, 2020, and it is 6:35 PM. And we are at the Room 320 of the Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road in Wareham. I'm going to call the meeting to order. I'll make a roll call. My far right, Mr. Conti, Christopher Conti, our associate member, regular member, Veronica Devenese, our clerk, Jim Akabachi, to my left, town planner, Mr. Kim Buckland, and myself, the chair, Nazir El Klaasi. We have to do some minutes before we go forward.
No, the minutes aren't prepared yet.
They're not prepared. Okay, well, I wasn't here for those anyway. All righty.
He's silent. If he answers me, I won't hear it.
I'm going to turn this thing off. So, he called it to order, we get...
He's not here?
It should be here, I don't know why it was taken out.
Chris.
It's like a black thing, you know, it's like...
There it is. Right now, that's the regulation.
Joe, you tried Paul and Jake, no answer?
Back to within us.
You want me to try Walter?
Sorry, did you try Walter?
I, I texted him, I'll phone.
You texted him, yeah, yeah.
And the other gentleman, what's the name?
He's on the way there.
The other gentleman?
Chris?
No, the other...
Richard Sample is definitely not going to be here.
Mr. Sample?
He's still in his office and saying he couldn't be here.
All right, but, okay, so hopefully the other shows up. All right. Twenty-two dash eleven, Walmart Cranberry Highway.
That's a, that's a us map.
Okay, a release of, anyone here from Walmart?
No, the, I did a site inspection and compared the landscape plan, which is under the performance bond against what they, what was in place. I contacted the representative from Walmart and explained that they had to replace a couple of trees and some mulch in the landscaping to meet the requirements for the landscape plan. So they're, they said they would proceed with the repairs.
So we'll continue for next one?
Correct.
Okay.
This is the second or third time we've continued this, right? Jim, is your mic on?
Yes.
I can't hear you.
Yeah, my mic's on, I'm just not using it.
Well, that's, that's a problem.
That's probably why you can't hear me.
Okay, I'll let him know.
Yeah, this has been the, this is the third time.
So, but it's more us than them, correct?
No, it's them.
It's them?
Yeah, they got to comply.
Yeah, but they didn't know that there was a couple of trees. They did everything, they thought they had everything done and somebody went down there and found a couple of trees they didn't like and said replace them, but that only happened two weeks ago.
Okay, that's going to have to replace them. We just continue.
Yeah, okay.
We'll continue. Do we need to vote for that?
No, you don't.
Okay, so Sonia will continue this till September... September 23rd. Very good. All right, we're going to go move to the public hearings. First public hearing seventeen dash twenty, Richard and Kim McNair, special permit or variance for thirty-four Mayflower Ridge, map one thirty-two lot MR4.
Just sit tight for a second while we get rid, no, you come up. They're going to, no, no, come up, get yourself comfortable, get organized, but it's got to be read in.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on September 9th, 2020 at 6:30 PM in the Room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number seventeen twenty for a variance and or special permit from the requirements of Article 625 Note 2 under the Wareham zoning bylaws for Richard H. and Kim McNair of thirty-four Mayflower Ridge Drive, Wareham, Mass., proposing to construct a decat attached garage at the same address, assessors map one thirty-two lot MR4 in the CG and MR30 zoning district.
I'd like, you name a new address for the racket, name an address for the racket?
Richard McNair, thirty-four Mayflower Ridge Drive, Wareham, Mass.
Kim McNair, thirty-four Mayflower Ridge Drive, Wareham, Mass.
All right, well, let us know with you. What are you planning to do?
I'm going to put a twenty-six by thirty steel garage up. Wanted to put it in the back, but I can't because of septic and setbacks and things like that.
Okay.
Can I interrupt you for one moment, Naz?
Yeah, go ahead.
Do we want to let them know that they have a four-member board right now and not five?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I've been rushed to Evan.
Walter is on his way, though. He should be here in about ten minutes.
He is on his way?
Before we continue, I'm, it's been a while.
Yeah.
You have the right to be heard with five board members, we're only four.
Okay.
If you go forward, you have to get four out of four.
Okay.
We have a fifth member coming. I recommend you wait for the fifth one, we table you.
Okay, because we would need four out of four?
You need out of four or four out of five.
Oh, wow.
It's, it's your call, whatever you wish to do, ma'am.
You need, you need four to get, to get a yes. Whether there's four or five of us, you need four in the affirmative.
We have a fifth member coming if you want to hold.
No, we're fine.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, very well, so, and Mr. Conti will be sitting for Walter chair, all right, Mr. Walter Cruz. All right, so, so you want to, you want to put a garage in the front, so apparently you need a variance because you put in the garage in the front?
Yes.
It's supposed to be in the side of the house or the back. You meet setbacks?
Yes.
MR30 is there, right?
Yeah, it's been approved by conservation. We had their conservation hearing a couple of weeks ago.
Right.
And it'll also all be covered in the front by, there's a lot of trees and everything there, so it really won't even be visible from the road. It's forty-five feet setback.
And what's the setback in the front there, twenty?
I think it's twenty, they said, on the note.
It's MR30, right?
Yeah. Twenty feet.
Let me see one thing quick.
So, Naz?
Yeah, go ahead.
From what I can see, they have no other place on the property to put it. I highlighted this while you, that's where they want to go, that's where their house is. This is all wetland. They're kind of painted into a corner, they have a, they have a, what I can see as a...
Good hardship.
Hardship, and the hardship is...
Shape of the lot.
The shape of the lot, the topography, the wetland. Could make a list, or you could just say, look, this makes sense.
All right, Mr. Conti, you want to put some, two cents on that?
You been able to see it yet?
I, yeah, I took a drive-by there, actually, and I think your neighbors are in a similar situation. Don't they have a garage that's built in the front?
Right.
That, that's, that's right near, the same type of situation you want to build?
Same thing, yeah, exactly.
I don't, I don't have any more questions.
Veronica?
Yeah, I have no questions, I reviewed it.
Jim, you want to say anything else?
Um, do I, my question is, do we need to determine whether this is more detrimental to the neighborhood to decide whether it's a variance or a special permit?
No, it's definitely a variance.
Definitely a variance, you're not concerned about whether it's, okay.
All right, anyone in the audience want to speak in favor or against? I hear none, let me, let me look a couple of things quick. All right, Walter. Okay, all right, so if we don't hear, Ken, you want to say anything?
No, this meets the criteria for a variance.
All right, good, so it does meet the statute. All right, so if I, you want to do, say anything else? No, ma'am?
No.
Make a motion to close the public, the public portion of this hearing?
Do I have a second?
I second.
Second by Mr. Monty, all in favor, say aye.
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 I'd like to make another motion to, to approve the application as presented with standard conditions.
I'll second.
Second by Veronica, do I have, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, so it carries, very good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If that wasn't hard enough, you can come back later, we can stick a pin in you or something.
No, thanks.
Okay.
Have a good evening.
Have a good night.
What is that, forty-eight, section ten, a variance or seventeen?
Ten.
Eighteen twenty, you're on deck. Roger and Shannon Keys. We still have to read you in, but I figured I'd let you get up and warm the seat. And then these are going back with it.
Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on September 9th, 2020 at 6:30 PM in the Room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number eighteen twenty for a variance and or special permit from the requirements of Table 621, Section thirteen fifty-two and Section thirteen sixty-one under the Wareham zoning bylaws for the, for Roger and Shannon Keys of Seven Harborview Lane, Wareham, Mass., proposing an addition of a two-car garage with mudroom and master bedroom to the existing dwelling at Seven Harborview Lane, Wareham, Mass., assessors map twenty-nine lot ten, one oh one three, in the R-60 zoning district.
Well, name an address for the racket?
My name, I'm, my, my name is Roger Keys, Seven Harborview Lane.
Shannon Keys, Seven Harborview Lane.
All right, you want to let us know, what are you?
We, we've had this home for quite a few years, we'd like to put a...
Just get this closer to you, so on your racket, the mic.
Which one is working, is this one working?
Yeah, that's...
We've had this home for quite a few years, it is a three-level basement with washer and dryer in the basement, and our bedroom is on the top floor. I have some physical disabilities that really don't allow me to go up and down the stairs that much, so we would like to put a, we do not have a garage or any place to store our vehicles, so we'd like to extend our home and put a two-car garage with a small bedroom on the back and just a place to keep the vehicles in the winter and a place to eventually move into for our bedroom.
All right, very well, just let the record knows it's...
Walter.
Six forty-five.
Switch nameplates, they got your nameplate down.
And regular member, Walter Cruz is in, the last one, Walter. All right, okay, so why don't you restate your, your case, so this way Mr. Walter can sit on it, it's for your benefit.
Okay.
All right?
So, in effect, repeat what I just said?
Yeah, yeah, so he can back, go back on.
Walter, we have a small cape on Seven Harborview Lane, the bottom, the basement has our washer and dryer, the top floor is where our bedroom is. What we'd like to do is put an extension, which is the only place we can extend on the house, which is not in a flood zone, a small bun room, a two-car garage with a room in the back which will eventually be a bedroom. We're only doing it just because we'd like to keep our vehicles out of the weather during the winter, obviously, we don't have a garage, and eventually move into a one-floor living area so we could spend more time here.
Okay, very good. One thing quick, and you are in the R-60, right? Okay, so that's an existing non-conforming lot, so if the board sees fit, you could treat it as a special permit, we'll give them release on thirteen sixty-one. All right, I start by, and for the record, Mr. Conti was set for Jake Morrison's seat. Mr. Conti, do you have a comment on that project?
No, I don't have any questions right now.
Go into Veronica?
Veronica.
I don't have any questions.
I think it's going to be my turn. I'm pulling a, I just turned twenty-nine and I'm having one of them moments, and I, I usually know where everything is in the world. Where's Harborview in Wareham?
Harborview Lane is off of Brae Neck Road, very close to the Gulf.
Little Harbor.
But it's before, you turn right on...
Little Harbor?
You go down Little Harbor Road and then you turn on...
Before you get to Little Harbor.
Right.
Okay.
It's, it's basically...
It's on the right-hand side, it's one of those, it looks like a driveway, but it's really a street?
Cross from Robert Jordan, exactly, it's a little...
Cross, yeah, 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 okay. I just wanted to get, you know, where you are in the world, and, and I was trying to look at your plan and listen all at the same time. How mu, how much land do you have?
It's a little over an acre, but...
Just, just over an acre.
There is a dip in the back, this is, this is in the dry area where they suggested that we put this addition. Actually, it's the only place that we can put this addition.
This is out of the conservation easement or the conservation area.
Right, so, the building inspector says the addition does not meet the current setback requirements.
Correct.
And, and so did it meet the setback requirements when it was built and now it doesn't? Is that what happened, so the zoning changed?
Built in early seventies.
It was built in the seventies, it conformed, it met setback requirements, now they've changed the setback requirements, and so you want to continue the same, you're not going to go any closer, but because it changed, you're continuing?
That's correct.
And then you need a special permit? If, unless we find that it's substantially more detrimental, and then we got to go for a variance, is that correct?
Right, now, because the lot is an existing non-conforming, I think a special permit is a fit, I mean, a fits because setback should be twenty, they have fifteen eight, so if the board feel it's detrimental to the neighborhood, we go as a variance, if not, we go as a special permit, but let me pass to Walter. Walter, what do you have to say?
I am looking at Walter Cruz. Biggest concern I would have is the elevation, but the elevation seems fine, I mean, I don't have a problem with this.
All right, the, where we have located this building is the only place on our lot that we could possibly put a, with the correct elevation, and the road in, historically is supposedly fifty feet wide, but it's, it has never been fifty-foot wide, so we are...
Right.
Have plenty of room.
And we have canvassed all our neighbors and nobody has objected, and we are most probably the smallest house on that private road.
Is anyone in the audience want to speak in favor or against? Okay, I hear none.
Are we, I would like to make a motion that we, that this is not detrimental to the neighborhood and we look at it as a special permit.
All right, let's close it first, and do you want to add anything before we close the public hearing?
She's not closing public hearing, she's making the motion that it's not detrimental.
We still have to close it.
We're going to close before the...
We're preparing the hearing to close before you take action.
Okay.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Walter Cruz, second. Okay, thank you, do you want to add anything before we close? All right.
And you've opened it to the public.
Second by Walter, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, now you could speak your mind.
So I'd like to make a motion to move this forward as a special permit, and I don't see it as detrimental to the neighborhood.
All right, so the finding is not more detrimental to the neighborhood?
I'll second that.
That's why you want a special permit, so I have a second by Jim, all in favors, that, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, okay, so it's a special permit.
Yeah.
All right, any discussion now?
I think what you have to do is, is say it's Section thirteen fifty-three rather than thirteen, thirteen sixty-one.
Thirteen thirty-three?
Thirteen fifty-three instead of six, thirteen sixty-one.
Why, the building, the building inspector put the wrong section?
Yes.
Okay. Just an adjustment for the motion, so it's a relief on thirteen fifty-three and not thirteen sixty-one. Just, just a second on that, or make, somebody make a motion to adjust that?
Yeah, so moved.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, now, somebody wants to make a wishes?
So...
Go ahead, Veronica.
I, I just, I'm not clear on why, other than, is it the setback that we're looking at, is this the only thing that is non-conforming at this point? What's non-conforming on the property?
That's about it.
That's it, the garage setback of fifteen eight, because it is currently conforming, is it not?
Right.
No. Old standards.
It's not, it's an existing...
Was it the front setback is not conforming?
Yeah, but the size, it's, they don't have sixty thousand.
It conformed when they built it, and then the zoning changed, making it an existing non-conforming.
Okay.
And they're not going to be any more non-conforming with what they're doing.
Other than the setback will be?
Correct, but they're following the same line, you know, they're following the, if the existing house was three inches from the line, the addition's going to be three inches.
We're not, we're not further encroaching.
They're not making it, they're not increasing the non-conformity.
In terms of lot size, but it is increasing the, because the setbacks are in, are conforming. You currently have twenty-two and twenty-five, and you want to go to fifteen eight, and the standard is twenty.
No, where are you seeing that?
It's, the setbacks conforming, but the lot is not conforming.
Right, so that's what...
So it makes it, and whole, existing non-conforming.
If you look at the summary, if you look at the zoning summary table, it'll tell you which are, which are not conforming. And the table, and, and the table on that plan, it'll show you which ones, which dimensions are not conforming.
And so what is it that's non-conforming? Is it a setback or is it lot coverage?
Lot, no, the whole lot is not conforming.
The whole lot?
Yeah, it's supposed to be sixty thousand, it's forty-nine...
So area.
Okay.
And then the front setback. And that's it?
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah, if you want to see this.
I don't have any problem with what they want to do.
Any discussion on, Mr. Conti, do you have anything?
No, I'm off that, thanks.
I make a motion to grant relief as applied flow with standard conditions. Walter Cruz, second.
Okay, all right, we have a motion to grant with standard condition by Mr. Akabachi, a second by Mr. Cruz. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Aye, oppose, abstain, carries, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Love to share you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. One, two, okay. Okay, no, there you go.
All right, third public hearing nineteen dash twenty, Lone Lacoi Lockwood Architects, special permit or variance fifteen Cleveland Way, map seven B dash two lot twenty-five.
Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on September 9th, 2020 at 6:30 PM in Room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number nineteen dash twenty for a special permit and or variance from the requirements of Section thirteen fifty-two under the Wareham zoning bylaws for Land Lacoi Care of Lockwood Architects proposing a garage in additions to the existing two-family dwelling at fifteen Cleveland Way, Wareham, Mass., assessors map seven B dash two lot twenty-five in the R-30 zoning district and within flood zone VE dash twenty-one.
All right, name and address for the racket?
Ken, pretty soon you're going to be talking like an auctioneer, and I'm going to be like, sold!
You're on.
We're on, okay. Good evening, Bill Lockwood, Lockwood Architects, and with me is Lone Lacoi, my client, and owner of the property. The property's located Buttermilk Bay, area of onset along the water, on Cleveland Way. It's an R-30 residential zone, and the lot is about sixty-six hundred and seven square feet. There's an existing two-family dwelling on the property. The proposal in several stages is to renovate that property, which is in poor shape, and add a garage and add a, a second floor to the existing structure. In the packet, you will find drawings of the proposed structure as, as well as a site plan for the, of the, of the property. Phase one is currently under construction, which is renovation of the basement level, which, as a by right project, phase two would consist of renovations to the, the first floor and addition of a partial second floor. Phase three would consist of addition of a garage. The lot is undersized, the, the setbacks are less than ideal on, on either side, but we are not making them worse in either of those cases. We will be increasing the floor area ratio slightly, and we will be increasing the building coverage. There's no requirement for building coverage, but that will be increasing. Let's see, the, it's a very steeply shaped sloping lot, and the only place available to do anything other than the structure itself is in the front setback, which is where we're asking to put the garage. In your, in your booklet, if you look at the aerial photograph, which is about second or third page from the, from the rear, you'll see the Buttermilk Bay in the upper left-hand corner, and the struck, structure that is approaching the left margin in the upper left-hand corner is the structure to the left of the, the subject structure. It has a garage right up to the street as we are proposing. We are the second house from, from the left on Cleveland Way, and if you look two houses to the right, the, their house approaches the, the street very closely as well.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I'm sorry to make you back up a little bit, but...
That's okay.
We're, we're looking at this aerial view.
You're looking at that aerial view.
All right, could you talk me through it again? I'm, I kind of got lost.
Okay.
Bring me in from Choctaw, which house are we looking at?
Come in from Choctaw, you take a right onto Cleveland Way.
Uh-huh.
Go as far as the picture shows and back up, you know, the second house from, from the end.
Water side or, on the left or on the right?
On the water side, yes.
Okay. So it's the one with a little bump, bump on it, a little bubble on it?
It's got a little bump, appears to have a little blip to the right-hand side as you look at it on the page.
Yeah, okay.
And if you look at the, to the house to its left, that house shows a garage which approaches... And if you look at, to the house to its left, that house shows a garage, which approaches, which is clearly in the setback, similar to what we're proposing to do.
Gotcha. Okay, that's what I was missing.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, excuse me, so the house you're referring to with the garage is seventeen Cleveland Way, to the left of it?
That sounds correct.
Garage setback right off the road?
Yep.
You're looking at it on Google Earth?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. I was just about to do the same thing. Get a better picture.
So you're in an existing non-conforming law?
Yes, we are.
And you want to increase the non-conformity if the board, because you're, again, it's the same case before you, like before you. If the board feels it's not detrimental in neighborhood, they could grant a special permit versus a variance. Before we go any further, anyone in the audience want to speak in favor of this project?
I have a question.
Excuse me, you in favor or against?
I just have a question.
All right, just come to the microphone, you have to be in record, just put, state your name.
You've got to state your name first, and then, and then you...
Deborah Doyle, six Cleveland Way.
Yes.
Neighbor across the street. Is it, is it still designated as a two-family home?
I believe they're not taking that off, yes.
Yes, it is, however, we're proposing to make it a one-family home, a single family.
You're gonna propose to make it one?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. You're gonna propose, so we're gonna eliminate one unit, make it two?
Combine the units to...
Make it one?
Combine the units together.
Before we keep going forward, anyone in favor, against? I hear none.
I have a comment.
We'll get to that point in a second. All right, Mr. Conte.
So right now, it's a two-family, you're going to make it into one, right? The first, the basement is, is one family, then the other top two floors is another family.
Well, there's, the top floor is another family right now, and we're proposing that at the second floor.
And you're going to combine it into one?
And then they will be combined and...
And it looks like you've got like a little, like breezeway in between the buildings, you're going to have like a little covered...
Yes, open underneath, just a roof.
Now, to be honest with you, I know if you need a two-family, we have to grant it for you, but to grant a new one, I don't know how that works. But I guess, I guess you just gotta remove the second egress or the door or...
Well, if you...
And bring the commissioner, the reason I would say this so that tax you less, that's all. If you want a door.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, that's kind of part and parcel of the bargain is...
I'm sorry, I'm missing it. It's not part of this application?
It is part of this application.
So part of the application is, is that it will refer it to a single family?
It'll go towards zoning, become a single family as opposed to a two-family.
That's it, that's, okay.
And so if it's not approved, you'll just keep it a two-family and renovate it as a two-family?
Yep.
Do you mind if I...
I put the stairs inside the house, you know, so have access.
All right, through the chair.
Yes.
Do you mind if I ask the person that spoke from the public a couple of questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Ms. Doyle, would you come back up, please? Ms., you know, you said you're in a butter or an...
Across the street.
Across the street, are you directly across the street?
Yes.
Okay, so when I'm looking on Google Earth and I see this house, and I see where they want to add their garage, and I can see that the house slightly northeast of them has the same thing that they want to propose, are you directly across, is your driveway practically across from their driveway?
Not.
Are you diagonal? So you'd be more westerly?
Yeah.
Okay.
Close to Choctaw.
Okay, so the house that would be right across from them is a neighbor that's not present to your knowledge?
No, that's the boys across the street.
They're not, they're just, there's nobody here that's...
Oh, directly, oh, yeah, they don't have that.
And they haven't spoke, okay. So, and your only question was, is it going to be a one-family or a two-family when they're done? And, okay, that's, I get it, I just wanted to make sure I was clear on...
Parking on the street is problematic.
So you weren't objecting, you were just concerned that if it was going to be, continue to be a two-family, you might, you may then, in fact...
Just concerned, because we've had difficulty with...
You hate to use the word object, but you'd use the word concerned.
Concerned, that's...
Thank you, ma'am.
Well, the good part, if it's a one-family, less parking. So that's a win-win.
Mm-hmm.
I do have a question. I noticed the other one and this one. So when you add this garage, you're pulling, you're going to have to hit the automatic garage opener and pull into the garage in order to get your car off the street? Or is there enough room to pull off the street and with the garage door closed?
There is enough room for one of the, it's a single, single-door garage, but...
So one door you could, one door you could park in front of, and your bumper might be in the street, and the other one you definitely would be hanging into the street?
You know, as long as it's not a twenty-two-foot-long pickup truck or something like that.
Is it going to be two garage doors? Is it a two-car garage, twenty by twenty, looks like a single-car garage?
It's a small, a small two-car.
One door?
It's a single-door, two-car garage, yeah.
So it's twenty feet wide, one car in the middle, and rubbish barrels on one side, and breaking a shovel on the other side?
Yeah, you can squeeze two cars if you want to.
You could, yeah, you could squeeze two cars in there.
Yeah.
Okay, my, my, my concern would be somebody pulling into that driveway, the garage door is shut, and their car's hanging into the street.
And that...
That'd be my, that's my observation at this point.
Yeah, and that, and a valid one.
And that could happen.
That could happen, they have to have the, the remote opener in hand.
Yes.
Is it possible to have an electric eye in the driveway, so when a car pulls in on that side, the garage door opens and they can get right in, and there's no reason to leave the car hanging in the street?
I imagine that's technically feasible.
If it's technically feasible, it's something that I'd like to see added to the plan, just so I know that maybe the applicant's going to come home and, and, you know, not be, you know, if you've got to get out of the car, to open the door, or you forgot your remote, or boop-boop, but now...
If you'd like to so stipulate, we can...
Proximity fab or something could solve that problem. Like, I can walk up to my vehicle and put my hand on the doorknob, and it'll unlock. And my key's in my pocket, but if my key's not in my pocket, the door's not going to unlock.
Right.
I'm suggesting a similar system on this garage, and then if company comes, they can pull a parallel or something. Can't control the whole world, but...
But do what we can.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, that's, maybe I'm being a little persnickety here, but...
It's another, another layer of information and design that...
I mean, if I'm going to, if I intend, if I end up making a positive motion, it will include that as a condition.
We, I don't think we have a...
Is that a problem?
I don't think we have a problem with that.
That's the end of my questions.
Anyone else want to add anything on that? Or any comments?
I've got a slight question.
Go ahead.
You've got a little breezeway between the house and the garage. Is there any reason why you have that and why you just didn't take the garage and put it right up against the house? Could you set it back a little bit further?
Yes, the house is in the, in the flood zone, the velocity zone, and the, the garage is not. A light touching like a breezeway is allowable, whereas a hard connection would not be.
I prefer a heavy connection.
So you kind of, the topography's forcing you to go there.
What's that?
The elevation is forcing you.
It's a question of topography, question of flood zones, yeah.
Well, what it's worth, it certainly looks like it's an improvement, not a detriment to the neighborhood. It's bringing the value of the property up. It's improving the neighborhood, it's potentially making, you know, removing a family from the neighborhood, not increasing density. So I'm not, I'm not finding it highly objectionable myself, with my one exception.
All right, so, anything else anybody wants to add? I hear none, let's move to close.
Veronica, did you have some...
I just, I do have some concerns with the setbacks.
Go ahead.
At the front being five-point-five, just decreasing that so substantially. And the percentage changes. It just looks like a lot for the, it's a lot of building for where it sits and, and the road that's there and the lot lines.
The way is, right now, the space in between the parking pad, I call it, and the house is really unuseful space, and we're parking actually unsafely, almost like sticking out of the road. So having a garage and moving it, I think it'll be a lot safer than the situation we have now, because we have a space that's really just not usable.
I do, but I, yeah, so, but that wall would come down with the garage, correct?
That timber wall has to go there, you're right.
Yeah, so I, I'm, I mean, the wall could come down either way.
It would have to be some sort. Yeah, to get me a little bit farther safely off the street, yeah.
Let me ask you something, have you made the average of the setbacks on five houses next to it? Are they all like within the five and a half to ten feet?
Of the, looking to the left, one is clearly in that range. Looking to the right, two of them are close to that. One is also in that range, and another two are very close to that.
What are you referencing? What are you looking at?
Right now, I'm looking...
Do we have a map that we have?
Right now, I'm looking at the aerial photograph, and Nazee had asked whether we had done an average, and since that doesn't, the surveyors didn't do that, since that is not a factor in this area.
It's a little hard to see on this for me.
It is, I grant you that.
Nazee. This house.
Okay, so to your left, it's probably five feet, to your right, it's probably fifteen, the second one's about seven, the second one's about five. You're within the average, I would say.
Yes.
All right, so... What's the wishes, the board, you want to close, you want to argue more, what do you want to do?
I just have one question. So, looking at this, the back of the house is already elevated and put on stilts, or?
The, there is a lower, a lower-level porch at the back. So, the second, second floor, or the first floor above the basement, is, the last eight feet of it is raised above.
Okay.
You referring to the south elevation?
South elevation.
Yeah, the rear of the house, rear view, I see posts coming down.
The east elevation would be what we're looking at, or look at the...
Yeah, yeah.
North or south, and you can see that it's open underneath that last piece of, piece of architecture there.
I think Chris was kind of, when he asked you about, you know, and why couldn't you attach it to the house there, where does the, what would be the requirement if you were to do that with the garage up against the house? Because again, you know, it's the setbacks that concern me, and, and the space that it takes up, and so close to the road. I mean, it would seem that it'd be much better to be...
Understood, a valid, valid concern.
Excuse me, gentlemen, you want to keep it down, it just, it's hard to hear with the...
If we were to attach, then we would have to bring the entire structure up to a code for, for the velocity zone, which would be...
You talking about the fifty-one percent rule and all that jazz and...
No, we're talking about strictly building permit, not the fifty-one, not the fifty percent rule. This would, if, if you're doing a horizontal addition, once you've touched that structure in anything other than a nebulous manner, you're going to have to raise the entire structure up to the, those elevations and construction methods.
So you're...
So that's, that's why.
So the touching of it, though, would be minor, would it not? Would you just have a door into the garage per...
Well, I'm assuming you're talking about a hard, a connecting wall.
It's not a jurisdiction, we cannot, we cannot grant him relief, and that's, that's a code, building code.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not looking to grant relief, I just want to understand what the barriers are for you, for you to potentially move that and make that garage a little bit more conforming, I guess.
I, I think it needs to be functionally separate, and I don't consider the breezeway connection to make it factually connected, so it needs to be functionally separate. And we might be able to drift it back a foot, because we still need to have passage between the structures.
If you, if you, you can't move it, by the time you do, you're siding a stuff, you're jeopardizing the building code.
I'm not sure the juice is worth the squeeze.
Yeah, there's not room to squeeze it.
Yeah, I mean, we, we wound up here for a reason.
When you put the siding and you put the railing, then you're probably, you won't have thirty-six inches left, then you're in trouble.
Yeah.
Well, I guess the board, we're going to have to decide whether detrimental or not, that's, that's a building code issue, we're not going to get into it.
So...
Apparently, we can't grant him, we can if he wishes, but it will defeat the whole purpose. Then he has to elevate the whole thing, which is, I'm sure they don't want to do this. And keep in mind, they're eliminating a whole, it's two dwellings, they're making it one, or two families, they're making it one, so... I think it's, it's a good project, it is encroaching a lot in the front, but the next-door neighbors are pretty much the same, so a couple of houses down, and I don't see anybody complaining, so... Yes, 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 please come forward.
You have to come up and state your name and...
Good evening, I'm Roberta Lynch, eleven Cleveland Way.
Yeah.
My question is, what side of the house is this garage supposed to be going on?
The front.
I understand that, left or right, to the right-of-way?
To, it would be to, well, here, would you look, may I show you on the plan?
It's the right-of-way, yeah.
The right-of-way comes down here.
Okay, so it's there?
It's there.
Okay.
And it's a couple, a couple...
It's right there, there's the right-of-way. Because that, in other words, it's going to back up to the right-of-way?
Yes.
Okay. But I heard you say something about the wall, I went, wait a minute, the other side has a wall, is that something?
I believe, I believe this is the wall that they were talking about when they talked about the wall. That's the timber retaining wall that...
It's found in front of the house.
But there is a wall here.
There is a retaining wall right there now, and that's going to stay there.
Okay, does that, would that, that wouldn't affect you, would it?
So that's the right-of-way down to the water?
Yeah.
Correct.
And the garage is going to be here?
Yes.
For the, for the record, we've got three neighbors looking at the plan with the architect.
Oh, excuse me, okay, no, I...
What? It's a good idea, the three neighbors.
Okay, well, it's, and, yeah, and how high is this in terms of the house?
In terms of the house, it's lower than the existing house. So if you're looking at it from the street...
That's it right there.
That's it right there.
So that's not going to, that's not going to affect you at all, all right.
So before you... Before you sit down, ma'am, you said you're eleven Cleveland, so which house is yours in relation to this house? Are you across the street, or are you on the same, you on the water side?
Right next door.
So you're the, you're the...
As you face the house, you'd be on the right.
You're on the opposite side of the right-of-way?
Yep.
So the right-of-way divides you from that house? Okay. They just want to know...
I think for myself, I would like time to look at the neighborhood and just see what, where this is positioned. Cleveland Way, I'm not that familiar with it, and just being so close to that right-of-way, I would want to be comfortable with what's going on before giving approval for myself.
Veronica's requesting a continuance.
Yes.
Yeah, it's Walter, the only thing I would say is, if, if we actually, if he actually moves that garage back, he's going to encroach closer, because he's at five-five now on Cleveland. If he goes back, he could leave the breezeway, but if he goes back, he's going to be less than five-five.
You didn't, I guess you didn't hear his answer, if he goes back, then they'd have to put the whole house on stilts.
And it becomes an elevation? Because the elevation, based on the topography, is higher on that end than it is on the other side. So it says, it's, it says twenty-four feet at the corner of the house, it goes twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, it's telling me that's going uphill.
That is going uphill, yes.
Right, so, what's the, what's the flood, the... Right. So what's the, what's the flood, the flood height?
21.
So it's. So it's on there as its own VE.
Yeah. And.
25 is already over that.
Right, but even if one inch, well, if one inch of the house is in 27, you're caught.
And the base, whole basement, the whole basement level would be impacted as well as the.
So there's going to be a garage underneath this? I mean, a basement underneath this garage?
No, there's a bas, there's a basement underneath the house and basically that would have to be take, basically you're talking about demolition if, if you attach. Demolition and total.
No, I wasn't talking about attaching. What I'm saying is, the breezeway stays, the garage scoots back, but if you scoot back, then you're going to be even closer on the side, to the left side of the plan. The elevation doesn't seem like.
No, it would, it would increase the setback if we got closer to the house.
Yeah, if you went closer to the house. I'm talking just scooting the garage back further to give you more room off of this right of way.
Excuse me, Walter, I'm, maybe I'm missing it. Are you moving the garage?
Oh, he, he's, you're moving.
Away from, away from the right of way or are you moving it away from the street?
Towards, away from the right of way. So.
Away from the right of way. That would move it closer to the street.
Right.
Definitely.
Yes, that's what I was talking about. Right here is saying it's, if I'm right, this is Cleveland's way. Says 5.5 feet.
Correct, yes.
So if we went closer that way, is this where they are coming in on the driveway or is it coming in?
No, coming in that.
Off of Cleveland?
Off Cleveland, yes. The right of way is simply a walkway down to the beach.
Right, a walkway to the beach. Yeah, so you, yeah, you really couldn't, I don't have a problem with it.
The right of way.
The right of way is here.
Waltie.
No, I got it now.
Oh, right away to the beach.
Cleveland Way, Cleveland Way is to the west. The walkway is to the south.
You could clearly show, who did this, J.C. Engineering, the, the way they put it, they just put it just by the elevation 21. If you notice, he highlighted with green and red, this way he's out of the flood. This is key. If he moves it one inch back, then he has to comply with velocity flood. The way it is right now, it's not in the flood. Do you see what he's, the, if you look in where the right of way is, you see how he put in green 21, elevation 21, Walter?
Yeah.
So if you notice how it carries, if he pushes it back a couple of inches, then he's in the flood. So that's why I believe he's not moving it back.
All right, I get you. Yeah.
Well, it makes sense.
You're outside now?
Yeah, I was just trying to understand the positioning of it, looking at the house and looking at the plot. I'm good now.
Okay. So going back to Veronica, Veronica, want to continue to check it out? Is, anybody agrees with her or no? Mr. Conti, do you agree with her?
I mean, I'm familiar with the road, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm all set. I don't, I don't need.
Jim, are you okay with it or you?
I'm good either way. I'm ready to vote tonight or I'm willing to wait a couple of weeks.
Okay. Walter, you okay with that to go forward tonight?
Yeah, I'm okay.
All right. Okay. Hearing that, okay, we can move to close the public hearing. You want to add anything else?
No, I.
I have to add something.
Yes. Again, just state your name again for the mic.
Deborah Doyle, San Diego. We're very much looking forward to this approval. I mean, my only concern is where the garage was going to be. In terms of setbacks and parking, it's no worse or better than anything else on the street. Do you ever show up on Friday afternoon in our neighborhood?
I am, sir.
It's, we're very much looking forward to having ours approved.
So as a neighbor, you are standing up in support of this.
And I'm supporting it absolutely.
And you live there, you live there 365 days a year. You're not a seasonal resident.
Correct. So I'm definitely in support of it and it will be great approval.
Very good.
Thank you for your comments.
All right. Okay. Any other comments? Here and now, let's move to close.
So moved.
Do I have a second to close?
A second.
Second by Mr. Conti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain. I guess now we're going to move to, if we, the board feels fit to grant a relief on section six, I mean, Article six, section 1353, which is, will treat it as a special permit versus a variance. So if the board feels that, somebody want to make a motion?
Well, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm always in favor of moving sooner rather than later and not making people come back multiple times. In, in respect to a fellow member of the board, I don't want anybody feeling like they got stepped over. Veronica wanted to go look at the property if, I, but on the other hand, I feel if we have four affirmative votes, I'd like to dispense of this matter this evening. So with that said, I'd make a motion to approve as presented, if I can get a second on that.
I'll second.
All right. So Jim, make a motion to act as, for a relief on 1353. And we have a second by Mr. Conti. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose?
Aye.
Abstain? Okay.
We got, we got one, one opposition. We got a four yes.
Four, one, zero. So now it carries with the special permit. Now what's the wishes? Any discussion on the special permit? Okay, on the special permit, if the board would like to go forward, I'd just like to make a few conditions because we can do some conditions. I guess the applicant, we're going to have to adhere to plans drafted by J.C. Engineering, drafted on July 27, 2020. A second condition I'd like to do, that the applicant will agrees, will agree to abandon the use of two dwelling into a single family and that would be recorded in register of deed. You understand ma'am? So you've given it up for good.
So it's a recorded change. It is no longer a two family.
Okay. Also, I would like to add a condition that the applicant during, with the construction to add the drywells for the gutters, Mr. Lockwood?
No objection.
Dry, you heard that, drywall?
Yeah.
Okay, just make sure, it'll be in the conditions that you tie in the gutters to the drywall and also to be constructed according on the architectural plan. According to plans drafted by Lockwood Architect, revised.
You got a date.
Revised on 6/5/2020. These are the conditions I'd like to add. If somebody else would like anything else or discuss, please come forward.
Well, I did mention my concern about her pulling into the garage and the door automatically opening. I, I, I still think I'd like to see that happen.
Can I ask that? You know, we'll make the best effort to do that. I'm not sure the technology, what's available, when, you know.
If you have an automatic garage door opener, you can buy it with a fob that when you pull up, the door will just automatically open.
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
That's all, that's all I want.
Make sure there's an offer to everyone else.
I want it in the, I want it in your car. So when you pull up, you push the button, it'll help you in the rain and the snow, but it'll also, if you don't have that and you pull up, then you're leaving your car half in the street. You're getting out of the car, you're playing with a touchpad, you're diddling around. In bad weather, somebody comes along, they whack the back of your car, it pushes forward, it jams you into the garage and we like you.
That sounds great. It's that simple.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So you want to?
I want an automatic garage door opener that, as, as a condition, so that she doesn't, I'm just concerned about, you know, the car hanging into the street. In good weather, it's not a problem. A snowplow driver has obstructed view and she needed milk, it would be a sad story.
Okay. Anything else you guys want to add? All right. So that's motion by Jim. Do I have a second for that?
A second.
Second by Mr. Conti. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Abstain?
Are you for or against?
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. So four, zero, one, it carries. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in. Thank you for answering our questions.
All right.
Thank you for the neighbors too, for coming in and working with us.
Veronica, when you sign, write abstain next to your signature. All right.
Thank you all.
All right. And TJP, you're on deck. We still have to read you in, but you can get up here and.
All right. 20 dash 20, TJP Realty LLC, care of Amen Clower LLP, variance 13 over Jordan Road, map 20, 1,026.
Is there any part of the field to hold?
And one second. And you have another one? So these are two things you have?
Yeah.
Okay.
They were in, they were in here.
You didn't sit on the last one.
Right, I'll sit on this one.
So you'd be part of the property?
Yes. I won't vote on the other one, but I'll sit on the, on the, on the 20 dash 20.
Do we have a problem with the, with the, with the one that we're going to hear as a continued?
The continued one, you guys will vote on it.
We can do.
I'll participate, but I can't vote. But I can vote on the 20 dash 20. Okay?
Well, are you willing to look at the tapes and then you could vote on it?
No, I can't. I should have been at the opening.
Okay. Okay. I got you.
The Mullen rule, right?
Right.
I have to, yeah, right. So I don't, doesn't comply. If, if I was here at the opening, I can jump in, but I wasn't. All right, let's hear it, Ken.
Zoning Board of Appeals, we hold a public hearing on September 9th, 2020 at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571. Consider petition number 20 dash 20 for a variance from the requirements of table 621 in Article 16 definition of building height under the Wareham zoning bylaws for TJP Realty LLC, care of Amen Clower LLP of 39 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Mass., seeking to construct a new single-family dwelling at 13 over Jordan Road, Wareham, Mass. Assesses map 20 lot 1026 in the R60 zoning district. Thank you.
All right. Name and address for the record, sir?
Good afternoon. My name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Amen Clower Law firm in Falmouth and I represent Tom Parento, the manager of TJP Realty LLC. Mr. Parento and his wife are here with us this evening. Again, for the record, I'm joined by Steve Egan, who is the architect with Longfellow Design Build, who prepared these plans. This application though, on the same property that we discussed two weeks ago, touch and touches on some of the same issues, is, is different from that application. This property, 13 over Jordan Road, is a large lot of 5.39 acres located in the R60 zoning district. The lot is entirely within the mapped flood area. The majority of the lot is within either a VE18 or VE17 and the southernmost portion of the lot is within an AE15. The applicant has proposed to eliminate the existing buildings on the lot, which are in poor condition, none of which conform with flood zone standards, and to construct a new single-family dwelling at one of the higher points in the lot, which is located in the VE17 zone, but that point is elevation nine, 10, depending on where you stand. And this new structure will be compliant with the flood zone standards. However, that requires that the bottom of the joist supporting the first floor of habitable space be elevated to at least two feet above the flood zone, which in this case brings it to elevation 19, which is about nine feet above grade. As such, a portion of the proposed dwelling will exceed the 35-foot height limitation. Therefore, the dwelling will require variance from section 621 of the zoning bylaw, which limits the height of residential structures to 35 feet. The board may grant a variance when it's determined that owing to soil conditions, shape or topography of the lot, but not generally affecting the zoning district, a literal enforcement of the bylaw will cause a hardship, financial or otherwise, to the applicant and that the relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or derogating from the bylaw. This lot is unique due to the topography of it as affected by the flood zone, specifically the areas within the velocity zone, which does not generally affect lots within the R60 zoning district. The structure itself, as proposed, is only about 31 feet in height, which is underneath the 35-foot height limitation. But the additional height caused by compliance with the flood zone standards does, will, will be in excess of 35 feet. It'll be at elevation 41, so six feet above that 30-foot, 35-foot height limitation. A literal enforcement.
Excuse me?
Yes.
It'll be at elevation?
The, 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 the highest point of the building will be elevation 41, which is, which is.
41 feet above grade?
Above grade.
Above grade, okay.
Above grade.
I was mixing elevation?
Nope. Perfectly fair question and I apologize. In this case, a literal enforcement of the bylaw would constitute a hardship, unreasonably restricting the proposed dwelling. Given the size and shape of the lot and the location of the proposed house, as it will not affect, impact, be used and invested in public ways or affecting properties, relief may be granted without detriment to the public good. For these reasons, I believe the board can and should grant a variance and I'd be happy to address any questions that you may have. But before we get to that, I did bring some aerial photographs, which I think might be helpful based on our last conversation, that show the proposed location of the house. And can I pass those to you, Mr. Conti? And I have six copies with me.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Here's some, here's some, do we just need one page? Here you want, here you want, here you go. Here's some pictures.
At the last hearing, there were some questions about where on the site it would be located and what the, what the coverage.
Just for the record, we have to stick with this hearing.
Well, I understand, but I, I thought this might be helpful, given, given how that question did come up. I, I thought this might be helpful for this particular hearing.
Right. So, so you, that, that septic, that's the proposed new septic in the front or is existing?
That is correct.
No, it's a proposed septic.
That's the proposed and of course you're going to pump it over, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Not that matters, just. So, and just, this, I'm sorry, but quick review. So what's, you asking for a variance for height?
Yes. And it's, the proposed, the, the highest point of the house is six feet above the 35-foot height limitation. So it's 41 feet above grade at the highest point.
So you're asking for a height, six feet?
Yes.
Okay. That's the only variance you're asking for?
Yes.
And, okay. And apparently, that makes sense. So you could have some view, right?
Yes.
And the lot is over?
Five point, just about 5.4 acres.
What's over the R60?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I'll start by the board members. Mr. Conti?
I took a ride down there today, so, and went, went on the lot. So I was familiar with the area. I've never been down there before. And it's a beautiful lot, a lot of area. And I really don't have any questions. It's just a variance for height.
Mm-hmm.
I really don't have any questions.
I strongly believe that they meet the statute, statutory requirement for a variance due to the shape and the topo of the lot, because apparently they can go forward to see the water. So they, they bound to build it in the back, right? Because it's wetland in the front. You can't just move towards the water.
There's both wetlands and then any further, you're still going to be in that same velocity zone. Actually, it's a more restricted velocity zone.
Right. So that, I think that would state a great hardship based on the topo and shape of the lot. And I'm, I'm sure it's not detrimental to the neighborhood. It's a beautiful building. I didn't look at the plans, but a quick view, it's a beautiful house. So we continue with Veronica.
I don't have any questions at this time.
Jimmy?
Can I go last? I'm trying to do some looking here.
Yep. Walter, do you have any question right now?
The question I have is looking at, I don't know, it looks like a widow's watch or whatever you want to call it. Is that where your height's exceeding?
Yes.
It looks higher than the house?
Yes. So actually, the ridge height, the ridge height of the roof itself does exceed 35 feet even without that.
Without that?
Even without that, yes.
And that's just because you want to get the view?
Essentially, yes. I mean, that's, the whole, the whole point. I mean, that's, the whole, the whole point of having a...
But there's nothing but trees between you and the water view?
That's correct.
That was my question.
Okay, so, I'm, I was trying to listen to you. These things make it hard for us, you know? I'm sure the microphone got it better than I did. What I'm not quite getting is... Is this, it, it looks like it's a pretty elaborate home being built.
Mm-hmm.
And if I'm seeing this correctly, can you see where I was, I, I like the color, I, I, I picked it up in kindergarten and I never gave it up. All the reds are existing structures or slabs that are gonna be removed?
That's correct.
And the yellow is the septic system, and the blue is the proposed house?
Correct.
Okay, okay. So I got that much of it. And what I'm not getting is the foot... And I, I wanted to look some more, but this... This, which looks like it's architecturally beautiful. It's forty-one feet to the top of this, um, lighthouse-looking structure, a portion of the house.
Correct.
And that's from grade, that's not on stilts?
That's not, that's the, I, I brought revised plans, 'cause those plans didn't reflect the stilts.
Those plans were created while the structural drawings were being finalized by others.
Okay.
So the peers have since been finalized and are referenced in these updated plans that Kevin has brought.
So, so... Yeah. If you don't mind...
That might be elucidating.
That might help, that might answer a whole bunch of my questions.
Because if you look at the elevation...
Oh, be careful, it might create a whole lot more.
It might. Uh, if you look at the elevations, uh...
Ah, now I get it, now I get it. Here you go, nice. So it's a stilt, it's a stilt house? And it's the stilts that are, are what, it's killing ya?
It's going up nine feet on stilts.
Okay.
You get that, Walter?
Yeah, yeah, I got that.
You were wondering why the stilt, that's what's killing them.
So underneath it is just gonna be, you know, "Come on hurricane, next." "Go right underneath my house." "We'll sit here, the boats can fly under it," I get it. And this is the old Volpe estate?
Yes.
And so, I'm, I'm quite familiar with the property. So that kinda answers my questions for now, I'd like a couple minutes to just kinda ponder what you've given us. So this color thing that you just handed me?
It's the same thing, it just shows, just shows the stilts.
It's newer, it's in color. I can kinda put this aside and focus on this.
Yes.
Thank you. I'll put this aside and...
So, um, I do have a question for you. What's the requirement for the stilts that you have to meet, have...
So the, 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 the bottom of the joists supporting the first floor of habitable space need to be at least two feet above the flood zone elevation. So we're in a VE seventeen, so it needs to be at elevation nine, the bottom of the joist needs to be at elevation nineteen, which is referring to elevation above, above sea level. So in this case, above grade, that's nine to ten feet, depending on where you are on the lot. So we're raising, the stilts are gonna be nine to ten feet tall before you get to that joist level supporting the first floor.
You lost me when you switched from sea level to grade.
So, so when we talk about an elevation, that is, um, above sea level. And so elevation nineteen would be nineteen feet above sea level, but in this case, it would be nine to ten feet above grade. So...
Okay. So you're, you're basically at your requirement, you couldn't go low, lower according to your building?
No, we couldn't go lower. Cannot go lower. Yep.
Yeah, that, that elevation right now is like ten, so they have to go nine.
Yeah.
Because the flood's seventeen, VE...
Seven, it's VE seventeen.
Seventeen, bottom joist nineteen, so, and the joist about at least a foot, so... They already thirteen feet in the air, that's why they bound to be, to get a two-story house, that's why they had to be six feet above. Originally, the first picture confused, I believe, Walter, he saw three-story house.
It confused me for a bit, too, until, until I got...
Saying why you need three-story, and that explained the flood, that you, you loosen automatically thirteen feet around the gap.
Yep.
So, going back... If we took the nine feet, you gotta be nine feet above grade to be nineteen feet above sea level?
Mm-hmm.
Or hi, hi, mean height tied at? Hundred-year elevation and all that jazz?
NAVDU, yep.
Okay. But if we took the house back down and put it on a slab on grade?
Thirty-one feet.
You're four feet under?
Yes.
The zoning requirement of thirty-five. So really, what you're asking us to do is give you the same-sized house as if it was built on the ground, but put it up on stilts and, and avoid some of the penalty of the stilts.
Exactly. Not, not penalize us for, for doing what's...
Yeah. I mean, I... I never got, I'll be very blunt, I never got the, um, need to keep elevate, you know, heights. Somebody can afford to go higher, um... You know, somebody told me one time that, well, it's 'cause the fire department doesn't have a ladder tall enough. And I went to New York City and wondered where they get their ladders. I get it. And a house this, how many square feet is this house?
Uh, it's a little over four thousand.
Over four thousand. Are there any plans for there to be any, um, fire suppression within the structure?
Uh, not at this time, no.
Not, 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 okay. Not, just, just curious, because it is kinda, it is kinda remote, but...
And you're worried about the ladders?
Pardon me?
And you're worried about the ladders?
I'm not worried about ladders at all, the ladder's the only, we're getting a brand-new hundred-foot tower unit, and it'll be here right after this is finished being built.
Perfect timing.
All right, so let's move forward. All right, Walter, you come.
The only question I have is, is which plan am I looking at? 'Cause on one side, I mean, I understand being built on a stilt. Ground level is at grade at the base of the stilts. I mean, so when you pull up, the house is saying forty-one feet to me. If you look, I don't know which one is which, but this says forty-one feet from here to the pier.
It's, it is.
Right.
Right. I mean, that's a monstrosity, it's sitting up there. So what happens on the next one on over Jordan Road, we let him go sixty?
Well, Jeff? The way I look at it, as a, I personally, I'm a builder, you're losing twelve feet, minus forty-one.
I understand.
You understand?
I understand.
So between the first floor, they need some, they're not gonna do eighty-eight-inch studs with a house like this. By the time they do the joists, the first floor, second floor, and the gables...
Thirteen inches, yep.
I mean, and, and you, you, you're stuck with the height, because they loosen at least thirteen feet. So that's the problem. But keep in mind, the way I see it, they got five acres away from everybody, they're not burdening anybody.
Right.
I mean, believe me, I'm sure they would love to build that house right on the grass, but they can't.
Oh, yeah.
And they would never be here. Though I wish, I get a couple of these lots.
Nobody wants to go up nine feet every time they enter or leave their house, but I'd rather climb nine feet than, than...
I have one, I have to go thirteen.
It's one of the options of buying on the water or buying inland.
Anyway...
You get the same price on the water as you would inland.
That's a reference. Anyway, so, so, so do you have concern about this? I mean, will...
That was the only concern I had.
All right, very well. Anyone in the audience wanna speak in favor? Just please state your name, sir, on that mic. You could, you could, you could sit down.
Tom Parento, I own the property.
Yeah, just get closer to the mic.
And the truth of the matter is, when we looked at building on this property...
Just get this closer, so he can have a record.
How's that, Bill?
Yes?
Truth of the matter is, when we looked to build on this property, and I've grown up in Onset since I was a kid, I, I wanted this property, as you can see it from Onset Beach, you can see it from everywhere on that side of the, of the bay. And it, I don't know if you've seen the houses in Pocasset, they're seventeen feet high, little tiny structure with a little point roof, they look terrible. They look horrible. This house, it cost me twenty thousand dollars in design factors to take a look at it to say, from the beach, what is this going to look like? And if you look at the structure with a nice lighthouse attached to it on the side, it's gonna be a showplace for, for everybody on the beach in the town of Wareham.
Absolutely, I believe so.
So, because, you know, and I didn't think in the beginning that we had to be so high. Matter of fact, I tried with, uh, NOAA to get the VE changed, 'cause I don't believe it's correct, okay? Chances of, of high velocity coming into that land? The water's going the other way, it's gotta hit Onset Pier, turn around and go the other way to be high velocity. But in any event, it is what it is. So being that high with this type of structure, I think if you do anything shorter with that type of house, it's gonna look terrible. And my factor was, you know, build a house, nice piece of property, mine's gonna go on, next to it on the other side, it's not gonna be, I'm too old, I'm not climbing stairs. This one's for my son. So the appearance was more important to me. We got two cabanas down there, that we, you know, got a, a structure that everybody can see him, and that was a house that was there, we're gonna, you know, turn that into cabanas. It's gonna be a nice piece of property in view from the other side, it will help the town more than anything else. So that's all, you know, uh, it, aesthetics was a lot, looking at it from the other side.
I got a question. This is for your son, yours is gonna be on this lot or on another piece of property, another parcel?
I have a separate lot that will be my house. Right next to it. I mean, there's, there's thirty-three acres.
You have a common property line?
I don't know what you mean. My, my property line is the same as my son's.
Yes.
You guys have a, a property line in common?
Yes.
Yeah, 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 I got it. But it's not part of this parcel?
No. No.
That's just curious.
No, this was set up to be, uh, uh, the cabanas, a barn, and the house. And the barn is solely there because we're gonna have two caretakers on the property that maintain the property. So farm equipment, boats, you know, things like that, put into the, into the barn, set back on the property. And then, you know, this is his house, mine will be next to it on the other side, closer to over Jordan Road. And, uh, but both of them are gonna be highly visible, uh, from across the water. So we wanted to put some nice structures up there and, uh, you know, enjoy the land. I didn't want it to turn into, if you'd seen some of the plans that were, when that house, property was on the market, you wouldn't believe it.
Very good, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else? I see, I hear none. So before we go, before we, would you like counsel to add anything before we close?
I, I think we've really hit the high points here. I, I think, uh, the board seems to understand, you know, what we're trying to do is, you know, the house would be, uh, would be allowable, um, under the height limitation, if, if not for requirement for elevating it nine feet. So we're just trying to not, not effectively be penalized for that. Um, I think that the, the design is, is well done. I think that it's, uh, it's a, you know, overall gonna be, end up being an improvement to the site, given the, the non-compliant structures that are being removed. And, uh, I think that, that's about it, as far as I said.
All right, anyone else on the, on the board wanna add anything before we move to close?
I think it looks like it's gonna be a, a really nice house, no elevator, though, right?
I keep telling them to put in, but these thirty-three, so...
Yeah, he climbed the stairs.
Mine, mine will have an elevator.
And up at the top there with the lighthouse, is you're not gonna have a revolving light in there, right?
No.
Okay, so if I hear no more discussion, can we get a motion to close?
So moved.
A motion to close by Jim, do I have a second?
I second.
Second by Mr. Conti. And for the record, Mr. Conti sitting on, uh, Mr. Jake's office. All in favor to close, say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain, so we close. So now, the wishes on that variance.
I make a motion to grant as presented with standard conditions.
Okay, very well, so, do I have a second?
I second.
All right, a second by Mr. Conti, that the variance meet the statutory requirement of a, of a, of a variance, the applicant meets statutory requirement, article six, I guess, sub, chapter forty-eight, article ten, seventeen, ten? Ten?
Ten.
Okay, so, so, second by Mr. Conti, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Abstain, okay, it carries. So we got...
One, two, three. We got a five zero zero?
While I'm writing this, yeah. While I'm writing that, uh... Okay, on the second one, the continued public hearing, that I can sit on, you guys discuss this. This continued public hearing sixteen dash twenty, TJP Realty LLC, care of Amen Clower LLP, variance thirteen over Jordan Road, map twenty lot one thousand twenty-six. The hearing is still open, and Mr. Akavachi will chair.
Can I speak to my client real quick?
Sure you can.
Okay, we'll take two-minute recess.
So during that recess, so, even though you can't vote, you can't chair, you can't conduct expulsion? I mean, I don't, I don't, I'm out of...
Not that it matters, I can't vote, so...
Yeah, can't vote. Can't, if you can't vote, you're gonna, you don't wanna play, huh?
So do we actually have enough members to move forward with this?
Walter, were you here, what, were you here last week on this?
No, I wasn't.
Sixteen twenty, that was my concern earlier.
All right.
So we don't have...
We don't even have...
Form? Okay.
That, that solves my, what I was talking to my client about.
Oh, who was here?
There are only three members here from last session. And I think there were four that heard it, right, last week?
You need four?
No, Rick, Ken, four, five, it was five, but two of them aren't here.
Richard simple, Richard was here and, um, Jake was here. But...
Okay.
Can we, can we open it and, and continue, or do we have to just continue?
Open and continue, that's it.
But we can't discuss, because we have three members here.
They'll have to listen to the, uh...
They'll have to listen to...
Then they'd have to listen to the tape, okay, we'd be creating, making it hard on them, okay, never mind.
Would you, I mean, you like, would you like that, Counselor?
We're gonna have to come back anyways, so I'd rather just present.
Exactly.
If you gotta come back, you might as well come back and do it right. Yeah, I got you. Okay, then we're gonna, we're gonna open it, we're gonna continue?
Well, it's still open, just make a motion to continue.
Somebody needs to motion to continue.
And would that be the twenty-third?
Please.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to continue till our next hearing, which is the twenty-third.
September twenty-third.
September twenty-third.
So we have a motion to continue to September twenty-third, do we have a second?
I second.
And it's seconded by Mr. Conti, all in favor, say aye? Aye.
Aye.
It's continued.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I look forward to seeing that house from across the beach.
Me, too. Hasn't been established.
Yeah, that would be, that will have some pretty nice views of the fireworks.
That property's incredible. When we went down here?
Yeah, look.
I, you know, it, some of the plans they had for that property were outrageous. Eighteen, nineteen houses built on that property. And it, and I lived there, you know, a little further down over Jordan Road, I got a house there already.
Yeah.
And it's amazing how when, when Volpe died, I said, I, I know what's gonna happen here. Somebody's gonna, developer's gonna come in and they're gonna tear it apart.
Which one of you got down, further down over Jordan?
If you go over that little causeway, first house on the right, it's mine.
Lazarus built it.
Uh, I don't know who built it.
Mr. and Mrs. Lazarus originally built it?
Yep.
They had a little dock out there, yep.
I knew the property was great. So I wanted more of a family compound versus some, you know, development that...
So you're keeping the other house? You're keeping the one you're in now?
Probably, if you listen to her, no.
If you listen to her, no. I'd like to keep it as a guest house, so when friends come down, they can stay in that house.
Pretty cool.
You know, the cabanas on the water there will be like an outdoor kitchen, a pool, and a place for my son, myself. Across over Jordan, where Volpi's house was, and there was two other structures there, they were pre-existing non-conforming, that we're gonna rebuild three houses there. One for my brother, he has MS, so he'll have an elevator on that. My nephew wants a house, the third one, I'm not sure who yet, a friend of my son's. But that's about it, and they were already existing, so it's just keep it, you know, nice little family area, nobody bothers here, it's quiet, it's well-protected.
Yeah.
Yeah, I went down there the other day, it was, I hadn't been down that road before.
I hate to interrupt, if you, if you, it's for you better if at next, we shouldn't be talking anymore for next-
Too much, 'cause you still got one on close.
Counselor probably don't wanna talk.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, we have no more business on the agenda, other than the, any other business section here.
All right. Unless you guys have anything you wanna discuss before?
I, I do.
Okay.
It's happened a couple times now. It happened tonight, we're almost taking a vote before the vote, in terms of swing decision, and I don't think that that is how we ought to proceed. And I'm assuming that the regulations would be, are against that. If you know what I'm saying, can I, I mean, you were here, but-
Explain, but I didn't, I didn't-
So tonight, when I said I wanted to go, I wasn't-
Let's talk about one that's closed, which is, which one, like, for instance, like, closed hearing?
That one's closed now, isn't it?
Or the nineteen?
It is, it was voted on.